Call meeting to order. If everyone can rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a quick roll call, make sure we have a quorum. Mr. Abu Dawud is not here. Mrs. Colombo?
Here.
Mr. Gersmeyer? Mrs. Hanlon?
Here.
You want to say here? Okay, we'll mark you here. Mr. Pontillo?
Here.
Mrs. Price?
Here.
Dr. Romano?
Here.
Mrs. Sembler?
Here.
And Mr. Snee? The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Westwood Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time and place thereof: Westwood Borough Hall, Westwood Public Library, the Township of Washington Administration Building, the Township of Washington Free Public Library, the Record Community Life, and Pascagay Press. I'm going to start off, just a recap of the election results. We announced in November, meeting the election results and the following board members will be, the following trustees will be sworn in tonight. Township of Washington, three-year term, Dr. Frank Romano III. Township of Washington, one-year term, Mr. Joseph McAllister. The Borough of Westwood, three-year term, Mrs. Andrea Peck. The Borough of Westwood, three-year term, Mrs. Kristen Peterson. I will now administer the oath of office to the recently elected members. I will call you up and we will do that in public. I'm just going to ask you to read. I'm not even going to ask you.
Oh, really?
I'm not going to repeat because I baffle that.
Ha, okay.
So I'm just going to ask Dr. Romano to read the oath of office.
I, Frank Romano, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will be, and that I will, sorry, I apologize, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Frank Romano, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed AS 18A:12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Mr. McAllister, would you like to come up?
I, Joseph J. McAllister, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Joseph J. McAllister, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 194-1, nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJS 18A:12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of that office accordingly to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Peck?
I, Andrea Peck, do faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and
You could have a seat up there. And Mrs. Peterson?
I, Kristen Peterson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Kristen Peterson, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJS 18A:12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right, now that I've, we've administered the oath of office, we will do a roll call for the newly appointed board members and the newly appointed, the new board for the upcoming school year. Mrs. Colombo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Here.
Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Mrs. Peck?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Pontillo?
Here.
Mrs. Price?
Here.
Dr. Romano?
Here.
Mrs. Sembler?
Here.
We have a quorum. So the first part of tonight's business would be the election of the board president. So the next order of business is for the nominations for board president. I will now accept nominations for the board president. Mr. Pontillo?
I'd like to make a nomination to appoint Dr. Frank Romano as president of the Board of Education for calendar year 2022. The reason I make this nomination is because I find that in the past months that Frank has filled in in this position, he's done a good job. He's been communicative with not only the board but the community. He's a good decision maker. He's been transparent. He's compassionate in his responses to people who email the board. He's attentive and I think he's served the district well. So I'd like to make that nomination and I put my full faith in, behind Frank.
All right. Any other nominations? Being no further nominations, may I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
Mrs. Price? May I have a second? Mrs. Hanlon? And I guess as a formality, I will do, there being no further nominations, I declare nominations closed, may I have a roll call on Dr. Romano for president? Mrs. Colombo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Congratulations, Dr. Romano. At this point in time, I will turn the meeting over to the newly elected board president and he will proceed in the chair and continue the remainder of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rosado. We'll move on now to the election of the board vice president. The next order of business is the nomination of the board vice president. I will now accept nominations for board vice president. And actually, I'd like to lead by nominating. Can you do that? I'd like to nominate Mrs. Michelle Sembler as board vice president. Are there any further nominations for the position of board vice president? Okay. Then may I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
Okay, second? Mrs. Hanlon or Mr. McAllister? Thank you. There being no further nominations, I declare nominations closed. May I have a roll call vote on Mrs. Michelle Sembler for vice president?
Mrs. Colombo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. And we'll reserve comments for later on regarding the elections. Public forum. During this portion of the meeting, district residents and staff are invited to address the Board of Education on any topics specifically addressed in this agenda or on any other questions, comments, or concerns that may be, may be in respect to the operation of their schools. The board requests that individuals sign the speaker's list, giving name and address, and asking that all remarks be directed to the board as a whole and not to individuals. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding personnel matters are discouraged and cannot be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will it be liable for the comments made by members of the public. If a matter concerning a district staff member is of interest or concern to a resident, the matter should be referred to the responsible building principal, the acting superintendent of schools, or the Board of Education, either by telephone, letter, or email. Although the board may not respond to items raised during the public forum, all public comments will be considered and may be discussed tonight under the, under the appropriate agenda items or new business at this meeting or subsequent meetings under old business or during a board committee meeting if appropriate. Each speaker's statement will be limited to five minutes in duration and the public forum will be limited to one hour in duration. Okay. With that, we open public forum. Would anyone like to come up to the mic and speak?
I just ask anyone coming up to the mic to make sure the mic is at your level so you speak into it so it can be properly recorded. I can't even see. I think I need to turn that on. Mike, can you, can you make sure that mic is on?
Sorry, the pen isn't working.
Hang on.
Very well. Sorry. Okay. Sharon McDonough, 642. Hold on. Okay. Sharon McDonough, 642, Jefferson Avenue, Washington Township, New Jersey. I'm also the secretary at the middle school. I know we talk in, we've talked in the past and I just want to also say what a great job all of our teachers and staff are doing. They're working under incredible stressful times here and they just are doing a great job. I want to point out what a fantastic job our district secretaries are doing. They're working under really stressful conditions. As you probably know and probably most of the public knows too, we are in desperate need of substitute teachers. I know the board and we put out a, trying to hire people. It's hard to get subs now. Who wants to work with COVID going on? But the fact that we're going into schools and there are so many teachers out, it's hard to, you know, the substitutes that have to like get the class coverages every day are really doing a phenomenal job. And I just want to put a shout out to them and just, please, if you do get subs that are approved, let's get them approved faster than waiting and only doing it once a month. It would really help. It would really, really help. Thank you and thank you all for what you do. Congratulations, Michelle. Congratulations, Dr. Romano. Congratulations, new members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McDonough. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hello. My name is Doug Casado. I live at 2430 Cleveland Avenue in Township. I have three kids in George School, third grade, second grade, first grade. My first grader was just put on that sweet, healthy quarantine list. Just to let everybody know where this is going to come. So I have a few items that I want to go through for them specifically and I am asking for you to take action on every single one of them tonight, period. Absolutely. Every single one of them. Nothing less. I'm going to stand here until you do something about it, so please do. Going outside, using the windows, that's one and two. So we've all heard that the windows were open when it was freezing outside for some reason. I think there were some new practices put in place, but I'd suggest is, any teacher administrator decides to open up windows when it's 25 degrees outside and keep them open, there's disciplinary actions that take place immediately. Quarantining. So you'll see in December, Middletown's Board of Education recently approved a quarantine policy. That would allow all these healthy kids, probably the hundreds that we have staying home, to be in school, including my daughter tomorrow. I'd ask that you implement that exact same policy. It's legal. There's nothing in the governor's mandates that would prevent that. It's already been done. It's been executed as the email I sent all of you, mine and probably two new ones, I apologize, that clearly shows that regardless of this 10-day, 14-day, five-day, you can control. Why am I holding this? At what point did the risk assessment, me standing here become any different when I'm speaking without it on?
What's that?
Masking in general, right? So I know it's a mandate and you can't change it. So the masking in general, I know it's a mandate, you can't change it. But you will see that the NJEA obviously just sent a letter out to New Jersey's governor to ask him for some support, scratch on the back for the $15 million that they've spent on his campaign over the last three years. That's exactly what the mafia did for years, buying their way into politics. That shouldn't exist. You'll also see that the superintendent group did the exact same thing. The Board of Education group did the exact same thing.
Yes, I was actually going to ask you, Mr. Casado, would you please leave your mask on?
I thought I can speak without it.
No, not in, not in schools and certainly not under the current circumstances. Thank you.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I thought there's some risk management process. I didn't know that. I apologize. I thought it was, I was allowed to take it off. Sorry.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. I thought I was allowed to take it off. So from a state perspective, again, writing a letter, I'd ask that you all write a letter to each one of those groups, commit to everyone in the public, you're going to write a letter specifically stating how ridiculous that mandate is. So overall, all three of those things, or four of those things, if you don't make some changes on them, you didn't make them on scientific principle, you made them on fear. Fear of your own or fear of somebody in the community that you're somehow protecting. It's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. You may have seen the New Jersey data that recently came out that were destroying kids' education with all of these mandates. But I leave you with a couple of items. One, there's a laptop, my daughter, that you're supposed to be doing for remote learning. Here we go. I'll leave this with you. I don't really care what it is. And the second, starting testing the philosophies and policies that are actually implicated with the current risk processes and risk situation that we have in the area.
Testing. Now it's on. You must have hit the.
Hello, everyone. Andrew Gersmeyer, 450 Kindercomeback Road, Westwood, New Jersey. Can you hear me okay? Okay. First, I want to say congratulations to the new board members and congratulations to Dr. Romano and Mrs. Sembler for your recent appointment. Hopefully looking forward to a good 2022 school year. So congratulations again. Just a couple of questions to ask that were kind of a follow-up to the December meeting since I know there's not a lot on the agenda tonight as it's a reorg meeting. I'm afraid to talk too loud into. Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Ravanotti. Well, I wanted to ask, last, last December during the committee reports, we learned a lot about changes coming to the middle school and the schedule coming forth for next September. Do you want me to wait? You good?
I apologize, Mr. Gersmeyer. We had, we had a
Yeah, so.
An issue that we had to resolve. Thank you.
Concerning the middle school schedule starting in September, I wanted to ask, there was, there was, the topics of the survey were discussed during the committee report and then recommendations from the committee, but I was wondering if the results of the survey that went out to students, parents, and staff, I think there were about 900 total responses, if those responses, the results of the survey could be shared similar to the way the Class Three Officers survey was shared. So that hasn't been published yet. I think it'd be good for the community to see the results.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat this, which, which survey are we discussing? The, the middle school survey you're talking about?
The one that was sent to middle school families. Right, right.
Okay. And that was done back in?
The one that was reported on the December meeting.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely. And then just a comment about the decision to extend lunch by 10 minutes. I just want to put out, just thinking forward into what that actually looks like. The field by the middle school is, is a walk from the school, so it's going to take two to three minutes to get out there and two to three minutes to get back. So the amount of recess, is it enough to really like do what it's supposed to do to help kids get the brain break during the middle of the day? Just my concern about, on days that it's actually nice to do so, that they'll get a couple of minutes out there. What happens on days where the field's not usable or the weather's not good enough to go use it? Where, are they just sitting in the cafeteria for an extra 10 minutes? What's actually happening? Like what does indoor recess look like in our brand-new building? Questions I've always had and that I still have. Other than that, I'm looking forward to seeing what's coming and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gersmeyer. Would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi. Irene Finargian, 446 Hoover Avenue in Township. I'm not as prepared as usual. The holidays have been busy. I wanted to express some concern regarding the recent department's issuing recommendation to exclude students based on vaccination status for extracurricular activities. I believe I understood the communication correctly, that we were not implementing that, and I want to congratulate our district for doing that because it is highly discriminatory and segregationist. I wanted to also know regarding quarantining, that, you know, healthcare workers are being advised to go on shift, even COVID-positive, without any quarantine, because it's considered essential. I would say that students in school, being present, is just as essential, if not more so. We have seen what them being, learning through a virtual option has done, and it is not effective. If they are in a mask, as they have to be, they should be able to be present regardless. If they are not showing any symptoms, they are not spreading anything. You know, the narrative on masks is changing in the media. I'm sure you've heard. They are now starting to communicate what we have been saying. There is no data, there are no studies to show a cloth face covering effective against the mitigation of an airborne virus. So why are we doing this to children is mind-boggling. The last thing I want to talk about is the test-to-stay option. This is, again, you are targeting healthy children to have to prove themselves to stay in school. It's ludicrous. They have a right to be in school. If their direct physician says that they are sick, then that is the doctor to say, not for a test that is showing itself ineffective, to say whether or not they should be allowed into their entitlement. They are entitled to a public education in school. If they are asymptomatic, basically healthy, that's what that means, they are healthy enough to be in that building, they should be allowed to be there. There should not have to be a separate test done to prove that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Finargian. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Tommy Sne. I live at 772 Koch Peak Avenue in Washington Township. I want to say hello to my old friend, and Happy New Year to all. Congratulations to Dr. Romano and Mrs. Sembler. It is wonderful to finally have serious, unbiased, focused professionals serving as board leadership. Thank you for stepping up. I'd like to congratulate and thank the teachers, the aides, the building secretaries, maintenance professionals, nurses, administrators, board office, and anyone else I forgot, for helping our learners do something they haven't done since the fall of 2019, go to school every day, all day, every week, for four months straight. Thank you, Dr. Mortimer, and the entire WWRST staff. This time last year, our learners were suffering terribly from a continued lack of board leadership, no courage, vision, or empathy from our then superintendent. In the fall of 2020, we were told that things were going great, and we have a lot to be proud of. Wow is all I can say to that. Before the 2020 Christmas break, Dr. Gonzalez led us to believe that our district learners had a real chance of returning to in-person learning, five days a week, beginning in January. During the January meetings, we learned that the five-days-per-week goalposts would be moved with the support of the board as well as the superintendent. After the appointment of the two new board members last January, was there a growing minority of board members who actually listened to the frustration, pain, and suffering our advocates and learner were continuing to endure? Some education experts now call this unnecessary collateral damage, learning poverty. Why do I share this? I think we need to understand where we are today versus where we were 365 days ago. Our children have been back in school full-time for over four months. Four months since the beginning of school. This included the temporary dischannsplanning of all Washington school learners literally days before Labor Day. This past fall, the Delta variant was in full infection mode in the U.S. During that period, our schools were managed with care, diligence, and love, whereby we had a seemingly low number of students who were designated as COVID-positive. Thank you to Mrs. Catalano and all the district nurses. Your guidance and commitment to student health, and your ability to evolve from COVID to Delta to Omicron to who knows what, has been amazing and greatly appreciated. Thank you to the entire maintenance crew, Ms. Schwartz, Mr. Becker, and Mr. Rosato, for doing an amazing job of keeping our buildings clean and safe to enable our students to attend school every day, all day, every week. Our teachers and aides have been getting ready and continue making the most delicious lemon meringue pie out of the lemons COVID continues to deal them. They've taken on the challenge of wearing masks and dealing with desk shields like they've grading assessments and creating lesson plans. They've also begun to address the social, psychological, emotional damage, and learning poverty, which the flawed hybrid model inflicted on our learners. These last two sets of tasks may take years to overcome. As parents, all we can do is help, support, collaborate with these amazing faculty and staff. I can't speak for everyone, but I think many parents are grateful that the teachers choose to come to school to work every day in the middle of an incredibly infectious pandemic called Omicron. Thank God we don't live in Chicago or San Francisco. Why is this important? The return to school this past Monday caused some fear, anxiety, and concern for many parents. Understand, I'm not trying to minimize that fear, ignore it, trivialize it, or dismiss it. That is how I and many advocates were repeatedly treated this time last year. I am suggesting, however, that our current state isn't ideal, pleasant, or easy. It's really hard, frustrating, maddening. It sucks. I am hoping to offer a brighter side, that while today is a challenge, I believe it's a whole lot better than it was this time last year. My last comment is a direct request to the entire board. This week, there was frustration at least two district elementary schools that had learners sitting in classrooms wearing coats and extra layers due to open windows. Some learners sitting near open windows while the outside temperature was in the 20-degree range. The learners went outside for snack on these days as well. While I struggle with this as an appropriate tactic, I'm terribly concerned with this strategic gap. My question for all of you during tonight's new business section is, how will this board plan to implement a real air filtration plan for the 2022-2023 plan to resolve this problem by this time next year? At several Fall 2020 board meetings, I recall several members of the teachers' union calling in to voice their concerns about airflow in the building. Yet, here we are, a year and a half later, seemingly have the same conversation simply because of a few open windows. We're coming up on the second birthday of COVID-19 outbreak in the U.S. And a year we are still talking about, if in a year we are still talking about the districts' need to have six-year-olds wearing multiple layers, sitting next to an open window in a 20-degree classroom, and five-year-old learners having snack outside because we failed to get this resolved, shame on this board, shame on this district. You are weeks away from next year's budget planning discussions. Please find the money and formalize a plan. I don't think you want the story to be, the good news is, my girls didn't get COVID from school. Instead, they're out of school because they got hypothermia from sitting in a classroom with open windows. Our elementary learners are dependent on you closing the windows. Thank you for your service. Stay well and be safe.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sne. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. If not, then we will close. Public forum.
Dr. Romano? I'll respond to the questions that were asked tonight. So Mr. Gerstmeyer, the results of the middle school survey will certainly be shared with the public. I'll speak to Mrs. Laforgia about that. I didn't realize that it hadn't already happened. And when she advertises the new schedule to the parents, I'll make sure she includes information as to what inclement weather days would look like for lunch and how all of that will work out. So duly noted. And Mr. Sne, you brought up the coats and the extra layers and the 20 degrees that obviously made it to my office yesterday. Today, we have a plan in place, and that's going to be remedied. The windows won't be fully open, and, you know, students will not be cold. We have a minimum that the classroom has to be about 68 degrees, give or take, is what the minimum is from the Department of Health, so we'll be following that going forward, and I apologize if any students were uncomfortable this week as a result of any practices in any classrooms, but it will be addressed.
Thank you, Dr. Mortimer. All right. Moving on. Annual motions? Mrs. Sembler, would you move, please, annual motions A through F? Oops, sorry. G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, A through Q?
Dr. Romano? Sorry. C, we have to read aloud, just the code of ethics.
Yes, so actually, why don't we take out C? Thank you very much, Mrs. Hanlon. Yeah, we'll do, actually, we'll do A through Q first. We'll remove C, and then we'll come back to C. Okay?
I'd like to move annual motions A through Q on your agenda.
Omitting C.
With the exception of C.
Thank you, Mrs. Sembler. Second, Ms. Hanlon?
I'll second that.
Okay. And roll call, please, Mr. Rosato.
Discussion first, and I just wanted to make, sorry, one point. Just on motion F, just add Dr. Romano's name as the elected president for the signatory for the banking. And then I will take roll call.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Pontillo?
For discussion point, I'd ask that we have a discussion with respect to items L, M, and N. I know it's been a while since we've last done an RFQ for the district professionals, and I think that if we go ahead tonight and we approve these, that without having to, you know, mention it later on during the year, that we have for the 2023 calendar year, that those are automatically put out for a rebid. So that's items L, M, and N for the two attorneys and the architect for the district.
So your request is to actually put out a RFQ, put out a request for proposals for all of those professional services? Automatically? Or would you, I mean, I'm responding now as a board member for the discussion? So...
Yes, so...
Could we ask Mr. Rosato to put it on his calendar to remind Finance and Facilities to revisit that every year in ample time? In other words, would we want to do that with all, across the board, without...
Well, the reason I bring it up is, I know we didn't do it last year.
Yeah.
And we didn't do it again this year.
Yeah.
I was on Finance and Facilities. I'll take the, me and Andrew over there, well, you know, there were a lot of other things going on, a lot of other discussions happening, so these positions really didn't come up as a topic, but I think that it's been a while since they've been bid, so I think it's important that we just put that out to bid at some point in the near future. I don't think the purpose of what I'm saying is to hold up the appointments of them at this moment in time, but it's something that we need to look at and make sure is on the calendar in the future.
Right, no, I knew you didn't want to do it tonight. I guess what I'm saying is, just as a clarification point for me, I was just saying that, do we automatically want to just go out for all of those professional services, or do we want to address it a month or two before this meeting to see which ones we'd want to put on? You'd want to automatically put them all on there for next year? That's all I'm asking.
I'm saying all of them now because it's been a while since they've been bid.
Right, right.
But I think that as time goes on, once they've been rebid, you know, some of these could be a holdover for a second or third year potentially, but I think it's something that we, since we have not done it in some time, that we make sure that we do do that.
And I agree with you that it's a healthy part, it's a healthy process, right? At the very least, it would be great to have a cycle. Like, in other words, you know, I've done that in the past, I've seen that done in the past, where you just know, this is year one, we're going out to bid on, and it has nothing to do with whether the services are good, bad, or, you know, intermediate. It's just healthy practice, and we rotate through those so that we know that we get to every single one every two to three years. Something like that. But to your point, we haven't done it in two years, and so maybe we start with that and then come through, create a cycle. But either way, it certainly is something that would, so I think we do both. It certainly needs to go back to Finance and Facilities, but we also want to just make a note that we are going to go out to bid. If the board, how does the board feel about that? Good? Okay. Good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Pontillo. Great.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so for motion C, I guess what we'll do is, Mrs. Sembler will make the motion, someone will second it, and then during discussion, we'll do like a round robin-style reading of the Code of Ethics, where there are 10 items on the list, there are nine of us, and perhaps, I don't know, Dr. Mortimer, would you mind joining in and reading one? And that'll make 10? And then there'll be 10 of us. If not, I can do one twice. All right. So, Miss Sembler, if you would move item C?
I would like to move item C under annual motions, that upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent, the board review, read aloud, and adopt the New Jersey School Board Member Code of Ethics. Do you want me to start with number one?
And second?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. McAllister? Thank you. And so discussion, and so, again, so we'll start by, we'll start a discussion by reading the Board Member Code of Ethics, starting with Miss Sembler, and just going around the table.
I will uphold and enforce all laws, state board rules and regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes should be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. I will make decisions in terms of educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children, regardless their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run.
I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and make no personal promises, nor take any private action which may compromise the board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interest or partisan political groups, or to use the school for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. But in all other matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools.
I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer.
I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and I will act on such complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on Board Member Code of Ethics?
I just ask everyone, sign that off and return it back to me so that we can...
So you want them to sign the bottom of this page?
The other side of the page.
Ah, flipside. Thank you. That's better. Great. Good. Okay. Roll call?
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Ms. Hanlon, would you move those, please?
Sure. I'd like to move motions A and B on your agenda.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Okay. Roll call, Mr. Rosado?
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Finance and Facilities. Mr. Pontillo, would you move those, please?
I'd like to make a motion to move items A and B under Finance and Facilities.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Columbo? And roll call, Mr. Rosado.
Okay. Hold on. Discussion and then roll call, or?
We have, I'm sorry about that. I'm, I'm trying to shuffle papers here as we're, we're handing, we're handing in acknowledgements of the Code of Ethics. Any discussion on Finance and Facilities A and B?
I, I just want to point out, it was brought up earlier, motion A is reflective of the request from Mrs. McDonough's public comment earlier with respect to substitute teachers and working to get them to come to the district by offering to pay more for the position.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call?
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Finance and Facilities. Mr. Pontillo, would you move those, please?
I'd like to make a motion to move items A and B under Finance and Facilities.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Columbo? And roll call, Mr. Rosado?
Okay. Hold on. Discussion and then roll call, or?
We have, I'm sorry about that. I'm, I'm trying to shuffle papers here as we're, we're handing, we're handing in acknowledgements of the Code of Ethics. Any discussion on Finance and Facilities A and B?
I, I just want to point out, it was brought up earlier, motion A is reflective of the request from Mrs. McDonough's public comment earlier with respect to substitute teachers and working to get them to come to the district by offering to pay more for the position.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call?
Mrs. Columbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
I'd like to vote yes on A, but I believe that I would like to abstain on B, please.
Okay.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Move on to remarks by the president? Okay.
So, "I'm honored yet humbled to not only be re-elected by my community, but also to then have my colleagues show an additional level of confidence by allowing me to serve once again as their leader. Colleagues, I thank you once again for your confidence in me. I'll do my best to live up to your expectations, and I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. As we cross the halfway mark for this school year, let's continue our good work by working towards the completion of our goals, by supporting our administration as they strive to achieve their district goals, by foregoing, I'm sorry, by forging even stronger partnerships with the township and the borough, and by engaging our school community. I can't imagine more rewarding work than this. My hope is that together, we get to ensure the present and the future of those little people that we fondly refer to as our students."
Now, I'd like to just move on to a little bit of housekeeping during my comments, and that is just something that we refer to as standing committees. I'm actually going to ask the board if you would please respond to an email that I'm going to send you probably tonight, if not first thing tomorrow morning, just asking for your top three choices for the committees on which you'd like to serve, and please do that in order of preference. So in other words, if curriculum is, is, is your number one choice, that should be number one on your list. Finance and Facilities, number two on the list, if that's your second choice, and, I don't know, negotiations, if that's number three. Okay? All right? And if you, if you get those to me, I promise I'll get those back to you. I'll, I'll have those turned around and back to you within a week. Okay? This way, we can actually start to put together a calendar. If you have a, if you're interested in serving as a chair, feel free to let me know that in your email. Okay? And again, like I said, you can expect to see that email in your board email sometime tonight, if not first thing tomorrow morning. Okay? And, and just so you know, the four committees, yes.
Yeah, I was gonna leave.
Yeah. So the four committees are Curriculum and Programs, and I'll put this in my email to you. Just look for the email, the instructions, it'll, it'll be, yeah, okay, self-explanatory, but just for, for the public's sake and for the board now, Curriculum and Programs, Finance and Facilities, Policy and Governance, and Negotiations. And then, of course, we have Personnel, but that's a committee of the whole, so that's the full board. Okay? Thank you. And I'd like to close by just providing a permanent superintendent position update. So on October 28th of 2021, the board sent a follow-up letter with the results of our superintendent's search survey. It's summary, I'm sorry, in summary, our school community is in favor of a candidate who holds a doctorate in education, or at least an EDS, who has served as a superintendent or assistant superintendent, who exercises collaborative and situational leadership, who has expertise in curriculum development and evaluation and budget development management, who demonstrates an ability to develop and direct an effective management team, who demonstrates a keen ability to think outside the box and develop creative solutions to complicated problems, who is exceedingly responsive, in other words, shows follow-through and follow-up, who is honest and ethical, and who holds the vision that the district has followed during the past several months, and who is capable of making necessary changes. So that, that, that is, that is the summary of the survey items. And I have to say that the board agrees with the school community on all points. Sometimes, I'm sorry, sometime during the next two weeks, the board will be sending an update to members of the school community regarding the search for a permanent superintendent position, so please look for that community message. Again, sometime in the next two weeks. And that concludes my president's report. Thank you. Now, the next item on our agenda, pardon me, the next item on our agenda is other remarks by board members, but before we open that up, I'd like to just give Ms. Sembler the opportunity, if she'd like, to speak as the newly-elected vice president.
Yes. I would like to say a thank you to all of my colleagues for your votes of confidence, for your words of encouragement in taking on this new role. I do appreciate the support, and I will do all that I can to help continue moving this district in a positive direction. I'm really looking forward to working with Dr. Mortimer, Dr. Romano, and helping to lead the board into a new year full of hope and promise. I see brighter days ahead of us, and I'm confident that with this board, we will do great things together going forward. So thank you again.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sembler, and I'm looking forward to working with you as well. Okay. Other remarks by board members? Yes, Ms. Peterson?
I just wanted to take a minute to thank everyone in the community who voted for me and who have entrusted me to help positively guide our district forward as a member of the Board of Education. I also wanted to congratulate Dr. Romano and Mrs. Sembler on their appointment to president and vice president. I have gotten to know you both recently, and I am confident that your leadership will